Oh, got, I mean, and then we will come. We may gonna ask you on and and last of all, I mean, this. Me, you, me, which is in the real.
Oh, all right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Tina Stately, can you call the meeting to order? It's like, who remember Tina's accident again today? Jack DeJourlee, can you call the meeting to order?
Yeah, call, uh, the order board, board member, welcome.
Yes, please.
They called DeJourlee.
Oh, my idea.
Jordan. Tina Stately. Mike Barrett, yeah. How this damage is there? Like DeJourlee, here, Tom Barrett.
Oh, my idea.
Good stand. With that being said, we're gonna move on to item two, the guests. Do we have any guests here today that would like to speak?
Yeah. Here Josh Stone, and then Terry Goodwin, should be joining us in short.
When we have time, uh.
Yeah, we have a student here that. In your name.
Travis Ward.
Oh, me. Travis, we're in the basketball team, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's also a peer leader.
Oh, wow, you're a peer leader.
He was one of four students who presented at the Evergreen Conference a couple of weeks ago. Doing great work.
So hosted, uh, events at the beginning of this year for the staff.
That's right.
Wow.
As peer leaders.
Good for being a peer leader.
Travis is a real strong asset and leader to the student body, so. And we should probably, you heard it talked about the bathroom situation?
Yeah.
Yep, which we've already fixed, but you go ahead and share about that, and then I can talk about what we're doing to fix that, so.
Um, yeah, it's just, uh, it's hard for some students to use bathroom and some students make it difficult for people to use bathroom, messing around, you know, doing whatever that gets taken away from us. And I just think that, you know, maybe we could, uh, utilize the single bathrooms we have around the school more than we do already, make them open to some of the students.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Um, when I heard about it, that you were coming in, you did some research and Principal Shelley and I reached out and did some emailing and and are working with the security people to be more responsive and more observant. And actually, the bathrooms are pretty much unlocked during class time. They're locked during passing times because there are so many kids, it's hard to contract. They're unlocked mostly during class time, so the student needs to get out and go to the bathroom. They can usually find one, but we can work more with those single bathrooms as well, because they should be safer. And, uh, the security people should be able to, if it is locked, help right away if somebody in the bathroom. We do have to keep them locked during passing times and during other times because uh, we've gone through a lot of soap dispensers that get wrecked and vandalized. Uh, we've had kids flush things down the toilet that backs up sewage system. We got sewage sometimes overflowing. And then, of course, we have vaping and occasionally a fight or two or, or, um, other kinds of damage done. But when there are fewer students, because it's during class time, we can let students in and keep them locked, so. We will definitely keep better, uh, tabs on the bathroom. The student won't have to be walking all over looking for a bathroom. Thank you. So the other thing is, um, this is a more of a managerial thing, so the, the, the board could say, do this, do that, but it wouldn't affect anything. So the best thing, if it happens again, is to let principal know or let me know, and we will get on it. So if you have a specific bathroom you know about, that we can, you know, let me know, I will get on it, make sure we, so.
So you, what do you say, making it harder to me, and like, when you go in there, there's other people in there that are giving you a hard time, am I right?
I would say making it hard, so like, um, uh, let's say the security guard there was just applied maybe by the high school gym, and you're trying to use the bathroom by the front desk, but there's no security guards around. There's just that one guy at his desk, and, you know, he's not supposed to leave, so you gotta go out and find a new, uh, bathroom.
Yep, and actually, he thinks he's not supposed to leave, but he can. It's ten steps, twenty steps from his desk to the bathroom, the nearest one. Either the single one by the cafeteria or the one around the corner in the hallway, he can leave. And that's what we did today. We told the security people, if you have somebody who needs the bathroom, you can get away from your desk for ten seconds and we'll let you go. So, we fixed that, and the one, there was one day when there were no security guards, because we were six people short that day. And that might be another time when somebody was looking and they couldn't find someone, but if they waited two or three minutes, the security guard group come back, but they had to be at one spot for a bit and then came back, but. So, but anytime there's a request to use the bathroom, you really should just do it. But over the years, that's what the policy has become even before I got here, and that door's locked because of vaping, vandalism, the occasional bullying or fight. But I'm happy to report that, um, as you saw from my report, I could touch on this later, the incidents of fights and assaults are down a half or more than half compared to this time last year. And if we can continue on that trend, we may actually get to the point where we don't need locked bathrooms. Let's see, if we do that, that would be nice.
Yes, that would be nice. I'll need locked bathrooms.
Yeah, two language.
Appreciate you coming to the board and, and addressing a concern. We'll make sure that the agents will have access to the bathroom. Is that all, Travis?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Travis, forget Travis, your leadership tomorrow, Travis.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, with that being said, do we have any other guests?
And I wonder if.
Go ahead.
Ladies, sir.
Um, well, good afternoon, honey, Ms. Kay. I brought my robotics team with me today. And we'd like to do a little presentation if possible. Bonjour, Miss Liberty. Um, can we hook up to the? I mean.
Yeah, yeah, you wouldn't be able to show public out there, but that's okay. You can hook up. HDMI, well, actually, that's.
I have it on a, would it work to put it on the jump drive instead?
Yeah, I'm thinking that might work, so. Yeah, do that. And is it SC, no, SEFE program, wouldn't do that.
Sponsor presentation.
Oh, yeah, okay, you have it well disguised. This thing takes forever to open, so, oh, maybe not so bad now. Oh, it's a PDF more so, okay.
Well, we, um, I changed it to a PDF when the, the PowerPoint would not flow, would not save.
Yeah.
Um, I have students that would like to speak to you. We, we planned it out to take turns. Um, Ashley, you're gonna start with us?
Hi, Ashley.
This is Ashley Stately.
Like this? Really loud so they can hear you.
Yeah, I'll go get you that.
Tell me when you're ready to turn the page.
Robotics team, FRC seven forty-five, traditional values, twenty-first century skills. Ace.
Doesn't change.
First is a program that looks to spark interest in a STEM program among youth. They have many long programs for kids of all grades, levels, that their great, uh, components of science, technology, engineering, and math at the high school. We get to build a robot and take it to competitions. This is our sixth year as a team, two thousand eighteen rookie years, six students. Two thousand nineteen, second year, twenty-two students, two, twenty twenty competition canceled due to COVID, eighteen students. Two thousand twenty first, central season, no club were allowed at our school. Two thousand twenty-two, back in person in competition, eight students, two thousand twenty-three competition, nine students. Perfect. Our sixth season had its ups and downs, on the upside. We were able to attend the HCS National Conference in Palm Springs, California. For testing of Apple, four kings from Northern Minnesota, got their robotics and exposed others. The first robotics. On the downside, we struggled with team members. Only one or two members were able when we built practice of, um, come. We did, we made it to work, made it work. Through this year, we are in much better position with our new members starting across.
Thank you, Ashley. Well, you're, you're gonna let Casper take over.
The summer of twenty twenty, we attended Powells and hosted string days at the Boys and Girls Club. We enjoyed being out in the community. October twenty twenty-two, Northern Minnesota Robotics Robotics Conference Competition, Tammy Liberty was recognized as twenty twenty-two NMRC Coach/Mentor of the Year for her dedication and hard work for our robotics team.
Wow.
Kickoff at Ditch Key. On Saturday, January seventh, we traveled to Ditch Key in the River Falls to participate in the twenty twenty-three RFC kickoff. Here we watched the reveal of this year's game and started strategizing.
Yes.
Due to our success with every robotics last year, we chose to build the every bot this year. We had an additional assistance from the.
Um, instructional.
Instructional videos created by the first in Michigan.
One more game.
All day. Week zero, we started off the competition season withheld at the Michi High School. We were not running it, but other teams demonstrated gracious professionalism and cooperation and helped us move forward.
Thank you, Casper. Summer.
Oh, excuse me. Two thousand twenty-three, Great Northern Regional competition, March eighth through March eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
So in this next slide, we have a picture of one of our, a three-minute clip of the competition. I transferred it over to, yep. I transferred it over to a PDF and it's not gonna play, so, um, I apologize for that. We can send you a link of our competitions, but we, um, we did okay, and, um, when we first went there, it was our, um, first time for our driver to be able to actually run the robot on the competition field. We, we akin it to practicing basketball for three months and then going to state. Because that's what we did. We, we, we built and put the robot together, and then we go directly to competition where we have to do well to go on. So, um, but, I'm sorry, go ahead, Summer.
Thanks to an outstanding grant from Apple, we couldn't afford to compete in two competitions. Two thousand twenty-three, ten thousand ninth regional competition, March twenty-ninth to April first, two thousand twenty-three.
So, when we went to the second competition, we were able to compete much better, and our robot was, we were able to contribute more when we went into our different matches, because we'd had more time. So it was a, it was a wonderful learning activity for us. Thank you, Summer.
Yeah. Um, we've made a lot of efforts to try and show off the robot at the, around the school and in the community. Um, that's part of first, and what we do is market ourselves as not just robots, but STEM in general. And now this year's theme, um, which is awesome, they're gonna include ours. Um, um, obviously, we've showed the school bar, our, our robot, you guys came down to see it at the end of the school year, right?
Yeah.
And we plan, our plan is to bring them to ro, to basketball games and to show them off at halftime, if we can get that to work. Um, we do use the Red Lake flag as our team flag, and it was new this year, and we used it the whole season, and it was pretty awesome. Um, we aren't having second thoughts about continuing to use it. We want to make a new flag.
Well, we were very respectful of the Red Lake Nation flag, and when we go to a competition, other teams lay their flags on the field, and we didn't feel that was respectful, laying the, the, the Red Lake Nation emblem on the carpet. So, we're gonna still take the Red Lake Nation flag as part of our pit, our pit decor, but we're gonna design a second flag that we can take out when we go to do our matches.
Because that way, somebody doesn't have to stand there and hold it, and, and it's, it's more, it's more respectful of the nation. Um, we have, uh, we didn't bring any, but lab coats, that maybe you've seen the ribbon work on it. Um, that's part of our traditional values and twenty-first century, um, motto. Um, we got new toolboxes with the money that was given last year, uh, huge toolboxes that come into a table that work really well on the, in the pit. Um, this year, we had an intake and an arm, and we balanced many times, uh, our driver. And the driver back there is amazing. Um, and then, uh, for next year, we, I can't even read it, but.
We want to mentor younger students.
I was just gonna say, it's kind of the same goals we have this year, mentoring younger students, we. I wasn't following this. That's okay. Um, and one of my biggest goals is to apply for a chairman's award, and a chairman's award is a prestigious award, and you automatically go on to the finals if you win a chairman's award. Um, but it's basically bragging about your team and what your team has done, and that's we've thrown a pretty good-sized team right now, so. And then having a safety committee for the first time. That's everything, right?
Sounds good. Yep. Um, we're looking forward to this year because we'll be able to plan better as we have more consistent coaches and team members. We want to build our robot quicker, so we have more time to practice. And then things that we've learned is how to talk to people, how to use new tools, how to do any job without complaint, how to problem solve, how to be patient with other team members. These are all incredibly valuable soft skills. And when I'm with my other robot coach friends, we talk about how we use robots to teach kids or to grow kids, you know? And so these were our sponsors for this past season, um, Apple, the Gene Haas Foundation, the American Indian Science and Engineering Society, 3M, the Red Lake Tribe, Red Lake School District, the Northern Minnesota Robotics Conference, Everybot, and first of the Upper Midwest. And, um, we have some things on our wish list that we're working on. Um, we, we're always looking for mentors to help us with, um, us myriad of things, um, design, building, business experience, um, marketing. We want to keep improving our pit area and have a battery charging station, and improving the cart that we take the robot on and off the field with. And we have a driver station that we carry the computer and the controller on, that we need something that's more efficient to make sure that we can get where we need to go. But, um, then, so I hope you enjoy the pictures, because these are all from this last year, and we really, um, we really had, even though we had a small team, we had a great year. Our robot did more than we've ever done before. Um, so, I have a thank you card that we made. You know, pass that around. And we brought t-shirts, so we would like to make sure that we gift our school board members with a t-shirt. Um, we weren't sure what size you guys would like to feel comfortable in. Then I have two items of business. Do I need to, do we need to wait for them to be on consent, or do you need?
Just gonna bring that up. If you go ahead and do that, then we can see if they will agree. I think we can add it to the consent agenda for today, but it's up to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, email the back, and I think you can do it, so.
Um, we received another grant from Apple this last year, this, this fall, so we had another twenty thousand dollars that we need the school board to accept for us. And then because we received this windfall of funds, we would like to, um, we applied for two competitions again. So, we're gonna go back to Grand Forks like we did, um, at the beginning of March, and then at the end of March, we have a competition that we have registered for in Las Vegas, Nevada. So we're gonna go, we're gonna travel to Las Vegas over Easter break, but we need permission to take out of state travel. It would be Tammy and I, and my husband is gonna drive a vehicle with the trailer that will carry the robot in our pit. And there's another team from the Iron Range, the, that's going to, um, they're also going to Las Vegas, so our, our robots will travel together, and we'll, the kids and, um, Tammy and I will fly. And then, um, so it would be the two adults and, um, up to twelve, we, we've set a limit of twelve students we think that we could afford to take. And I'll, I would have that list when it's time to get airfare, when we have to buy the airline ticket. I'll have that firm list. Because there is a, um, as a team, we have an hourly, um, so you have some skin in the game. You need to have, you need to have given some twenty hours of off-season time and about thirty-five hours of build time, which is very reasonable, because we do all-day build, so you could get eight hours, six to eight hours in on a Saturday or Sunday. So, um, we feel that if you've gotten that, that, um, you are a member of our team and we need to thank you a lot. So, I don't need to talk so much. Do you have any, any, my, my members are kind of shy, because, um, these are all brand-new students. We took them, them to a, a off-season competition last month, and they did fantastic. I'm so proud of them.
Well, we'll give them a break, because we know they're on a robotics team and not the speech team or debate team.
But we're working on that. We're working on that.
I just wanna say that because of Sammy's and my involvement with robotics and the fact that Red Lake is here, ACES is now part of First Robotics. So now more native kids around the country are gonna be able to participate in this program, because they make sure that you find, can get money. They, they will not let you suffer if you can't find money. Um, and the competition, um, the fact that you're competing against somebody, but you have to cooperate with two other teams, and you don't even know who they are. So you have to make sure all the teams are, are good before you go into team day, and it, that really makes a big difference. Somebody say something.
They were, they were wanting me to tell you that at our off-season competition, for the first time in the six years that we've had a team, we made it to the finals. We were part of the finals, and we got a third-place trophy, which we should have brought with us, but we're, we're not very good at bragging, and I was loading the, I was hooking the trailer to the van when they were doing the awards, because I didn't know we won anything, because we've never won anything before. So, we got third place, and so we're, we're very proud of that, but we, we're not very good at showing it off, so. We'll get better at it.
Way to represent, true, way to represent.
Job.
Yeah.
Hats off to you, Kay, Penny, for, you know, I've, I've attended some meetings, um, conferences, right, and STEM, they were like, you gotta, you gotta, you know, this was probably six to eight years ago, right? And we didn't have this at the time, right?
Yeah.
And now, and watching you and seeing your commitment and seeing growth, it's, it's pretty cool to see, and then
Very cool.
then for what you're doing, taking them places, you know what I mean? Those, those are such huge eye-openers, mind-openers for our kids to be able to go to places like Vegas.
A dream, it's a dream, it's a dream.
So.
Um, we do, I know that some of you went to the school board, Minnesota School Board Association last January.
I saw you there.
I was not there, our, the robots were there.
I got to drive a robot.
Right, well, we have an opportunity.
Who was there with your robot?
Um, not our robot, but Cast Lake. I bet you saw Cast Lake.
Cause I got to drive it.
You got to.
You got to drive one of the robots, yeah, yeah. And, um, anyway, in January, there's an opportunity for our team to go down and represent. I just don't know if, I haven't talked it over with my team yet, because it's, it's a, another, it's time away from school and it's, um, to try to get, um, I haven't, I haven't planned that part, but there is an opportunity that we could go and we could be representing one of those teams that brings their robot to be able to show off. So, we would, we would love to have you guys play with our personal robots, so.
It's not as easy as it sounds. I did the mentor match for the last, the very last use of the robot, because now our, that robot's retired.
Oh, we could use it in January, because this was, if the, if we go to this event, that's fine.
Albert is retired, his name is Albert, and it is so hard to drive. I smashed into the iPad part that's sitting there.
Then the camera, not the camera.
So, their driving, this is not easy.
Yeah, I struggle.
But, um, so that, yeah, the two things where we were hoping that you'll approve us for out-of-state travel and that you'll accept the gift from Apple, and hopefully, we'll have more grants coming in that we'll be able to go and um, have you accept more things for us. We're hoping you put that on the consent agenda. So, anything else?
Well, you need us to add the apple on the consent and your travel?
Yes, they were, they, that's where they were last year when we did.
Don't become item G and item E.
If, if you approve that, if you're okay with that. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
You.
Me, which, Ms. Kay?
Me, which, Miss Liberty? Thank you, students.
You're welcome.
Item G, K.
Item G and H, yep.
G and H.
G is.
Accept apple.
Accept the Apple's gift of, uh,
What was it called?
Twenty K, did she say? Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand or forty?
It was twenty thousand. Yep, I have an email here outlining that. Request the board accept a robotics brand from Apple in the amount of twenty thousand, and then item H is to approve out-of-state travel for two teachers, Sandy and Tammy, and approximately twelve students to Las Vegas, March twenty-sixth to the thirty-first.
Yeah, and, and back to the scheme thing, I just don't feel comfortable in, um, passing it as a team because, you know, they'll be competing with class three A and four A schools.
Are we ready to, to hear it?
Yes, we are.
Next visitors here?
Good afternoon, everybody. Hi, Nicole.
Bonjour, Cherry.
Nice to meet you. I know, I think you sent a presentation last month, did you?
Um. We just gave a oral presentation.
We're just so excited. We hope that we will be like, five minutes? We got five minutes, we have a time around.
Yep.
Each person has five minutes.
Okay.
Oh, my God.
I gotta, I gotta fuel my staff here too, so.
We'll be okay. We won't take too much of your time. I know the time's precious.
There we go.
I just have my feet all day with the bill.
All right. Okay, great, okay, and I believe I need to ask you to put on the consent agenda, is that correct?
Um, I don't think, you know, this is a big thing to be, um, considered as a team, you know, because then you'd be going out and competing with three A and four A schools.
Yeah.
So that the process would be just to follow the Roberts Rule of the Border. When we get to the spot where we got the consent and approval of the agenda, that's where we will have a vote that says we would like to add items G and H. We would like to add items G and H. And maybe I, and then you would vote on that. So.
So I don't.
You can add, then they can. It would have to be a vote of the, of the board, so.
Okay, well, um, this is to show you guys what we've been up to, so.
Oh, hold on, Chris. So, for the uncomfortable adding it, do we even wanna present? Time and is it worth our time to present? Or does the bar get to vote to add it on? I'm just asking, right, like, cause I'm busy. I got cows waiting and.
The date was switched from the regular meeting, so. People approached me and I'm like, man, I don't, I don't, I don't like to be in the I don't know position, so I would like. What you propose.
Yeah, okay, so this is uh, the area where we have existing trails that we've been working on. Um, here's some of the trail maps that we have, uh. Couple more of the.
You guys know where that is?
Trail maps, yeah, you know where the sliding hill is, that the Whistles. Killer Hill, yeah, we're uh, um, we've been adding a lot of trails here this summer that are all gonna be for.
School board knows we do have a resolution. They have designated this area like a um, like a public use place. So for like outdoor events, outdoor recreation, so it's finally, it's um, that way with the resolution.
So this was last year, Dan Rogers had a group of kids that we would uh, prep these trails for. They go off skiing. We work the charter school, they bring all their kids off skiing. Uh, we also had some of our own events where we'd have a, a lot of the community come out ski. This is the new building that's going up. Uh, it should be completed here, I think, in the next month. Uh, this is the outside, they actually got the siding on today. Uh, this is what the inside is gonna look like. Um, it's gonna be heated, it's gonna be. Um, available for use uh, for a ski team, for sledding, for whatever, it's gonna be a community use.
And just so the bar do, back to that building, so it's gonna be the first off-grid building in the tribe, so we're working with Solar Bear, so we have um. It's gonna be all off-grid, we have propane, and then of course we'll have solar panels and burn by it. So really excited, then we're gonna have an outdoor pump, like old-fashioned. So the building's closed, community still wants to get watered. We're hoping then that it's open to the, the school district too. I seen your guys' kids walking down over here by the potato fields, uh, house today, like two or three classes, I thought that was cool, right? It's a beautiful day to get outside. So really, again, too, trying to think of the future to reduce in our health disparities for our kids. And offering them more um, outdoor activities. So it's, we open to the school, to your teachers, and uh, even that um, charter school. They're thinking like culture and living classroom, really excited for this building, and it's something that we invested in. And again, it's debt-free, there ain't no cares after, you know, art fundings, like it's paid for and ready to rock and roll for the community.
So I've been talking to the Vemigee uh, school coach for cross-country and also Truck North, I've been speaking with them. They're willing to like have our uh, kids practice with their team, so they can kind of get an idea of, you know, what, you know, going to competition would be like. Um, for assistant coaches, I've got a Pat Brown from the DNR, he's offered to step in and help coach with a couple other. Uh, people that may possibly be interested in helping out. Um, I think we're willing to buy the race skis and uniforms. For the, the team, however many we end up with. Uh, transportation, we do have vans with your program. But we'd be able to take the kids to the events. Um, you know, Dan Rogers is uh, on board for coaching. So, or anything else you'd like to add, Sherry?
He lost me at hello. When I talk, when I talk about this too, we'll talk about like the Jamaican um, bobsled team, right? Let's have a Red Lake ski team, right? Like, let's do it. What if we have some champion skiers out there? So last, last year, we started this, where we bought the snowmobiles, we groomed the trails, the kids came out um, after school. We let your staff use our, our vans. We did get a um, Northwest Foundation um, grant, what is it, like fifteen thousand? Bought a whole bunch of skis from um, the ski company, from Mid-Joe, wherever they are.
Got another team, so we're gonna be doubling up our skis.
So just thinking about the future, giving the kids something to do. And I think Josh told me outside that they have a list of fifteen students right now. That ain't involved in any other extra um, sporting activities that are interested in skiing.
Yeah, my kid, their kids that were skiing all last year or the year before, like they, they've already got experience, and it'd just be really nice for them. You know, for me personally, when I did sports, like practice was fun, but I liked to compete, you know, and these kids, like, I think by the end of the. Winter, they're kind of burned out on just practicing, and it'd be nice to give them that opportunity to go see, you know, see all the skill stack up with the other kids.
Or even have it up the Red Lake cross-country ski.
What is the uh, what is the school season? When, do you know, what is?
Yeah, I think it starts, I wanna say like in December, goes like, you're like February, March. I think Dan had like four different meets that he wanted to bring them to. I know Vemigee, they were willing to let us come as just a club. Um, but then the other school, you have, they actually have to be a sanction team um, to compete.
They gonna sanction you, uh, participating in that event?
Yeah, the Minnesota High, High School League, yeah.
Well, they sanctioned you as a school district. They won't sanction us as a tribe.
Because I talked to Nolan, I mean, talked to the regional director. You know, so there is some kind of, you know, I don't know if you understand that there's like. And a single A. Now we're in a single A, we're really happy here. And you're trying to move us up?
How it works though, it's based on our enrollment, so.
Well, they're trying to compete with these three and four A schools.
But that's what we do in robotics too.
Right. Oh, robotics does the same thing.
Yep, there's, everybody's lumped together, so.
So the cross-country ski would fit right in with the four or three A schools, and we wouldn't be cooperating.
Can I go like this?
Somebody else there, could you mute your mic? Thank you.
You guys uh, wanna add anything?
That was a good question, Chris.
What was Chris's point question?
About those levels, or what did you say?
Yeah, you were saying it would automatically bring us up. I was wondering how, how that work.
Yeah, so I'm like, cross-country club is what we could do. But racing other schools like Rogers on, we can't be a varsity team like Vemigee School has a class four A. No other local school could have a cross-country skiing area, I'm just the Mid-Joe. So I'm not sure, you know, when, you guys are a club, but you guys wanna be sanctioned under the high school league, so you can go compete. And with the big schools.
And that won't affect us, Chris, what? No?
It won't affect us, we're, we're not. We are rated based on enrollment, and so enrollment wouldn't change at all. But with esports and with drone racing. And with robotics, we're all together with other teams that way. Anyway, it doesn't hurt us, it's just. We just have to realize, okay, if we're cross-country skiing, or if we're drone racing, we're up against bigger schools, we're probably not gonna get a trophy, but. Kids can still participate.
But I think.
Did the rest of the school board see the list of students who are in this team?
They didn't, they didn't ask for it, so I didn't send it to them. But it's a list of students. He sent us a list, and they were ninth and tenth graders, or eighth and ninth graders.
Oh, eighth and ninth grader.
They're ninth and tenth graders this year now, so.
But to me, it's an opportunity, you know, it's, it sounds like our kids, oh, you can't do this, you can't do this because of this and this, but they wanna do it. And I've seen them kids out there, and it's a beautiful thing, and even me, as a baby elder, just kidding. But I, on the social, it was right, and I walked, you know what I mean? I walked, and then look, it just come by me, my, you know, kids, just kids I didn't even know. And it was just like magical, like it was crazy. Like, we have to have faith in our community and our kids. I think with Josh and the team here, you know, and this is a collaboration, that's just, ours information. The Department of Natural Resources, November, we collaborated together, and that's dropping them wigwams and working together. So I contribute part of the salary, our program to these guys, and I was just explaining it to them out there. It's a social capital we're increasing by working together once in a while. We think we could have got the beaches cleaned if I, on ourselves. No, we need DNR. You think we could have built this trailhead without collaborating? No, we need each other, just like we're here as a community members. As tribal programs to say, let's work together on this. Like, this is what we all talk about, right? Where's the tribe? Where's the school board? Well, here we all are. That's what I'm saying. To have faith in our kids.
Is there, is there some way that if you did get sanctioned as a team, that it would be on an interim basis? To see how it all went for one year, or is it a straight-out commitment for ten years, or?
No, that's one year.
Oh, and Mr. Let's seems to know, like, I don't know, I'm no expert in this school stuff, or you know?
Back out if we don't want to after a year.
And with this, and with all these um, trails and everything, are they gonna be used year-round, or is it just for?
Yeah, they're year-round trails.
Fitness stations in between there somewhere, like rounds or whatever.
Yeah, I think uh, like cross-country running might be a good sport.
So, two weeks ago, I think I invited Michael, I missed him there, but we bought a bunch of mountain bikes from um, this Vemigee Bike Ski Shop, or Bike Club. Right, a whole bunch of them, we got electric bikes, we got mountain bikes, we got fire-hiker bikes. Yeah, we were all over, we would have a couple doctors showed up from IHS. She said, oh, I'm the doctor from IHS, great. But, you know, they, they seen that healthy, you know, we had the fire, the kids were riding, we had the side-by-sides, you know, we had um. They went out on the trails, me and Michelle Backwood went out even, I trusted her to drive me.
I know, uh, Truck North has a team on that, we do something we could do too. We have all the trails and equipment ready for that, but, you know, kind of one thing.
They have to wear their helmets, you know, where I was looking at safety.
Do you wanna add anything, Pete?
So this is multi-dimensional, isn't it?
Yeah, multi-dimensional, yeah.
It's good to see something like that.
And another thing we're committed to do when you said station, so Josh and them is working with like the Kingbirds, Veronica and them, you know, to figure out the signage. And then even, we're even thinking like, maybe that was what lake's back there? You know, like, what was that named in the forties? It wasn't Long Lake, you know, so it, huh?
Emerald.
Emerald. So then just trying to get back to, you know, before colonization, what did this mean to us, this, this area? And then identified plants, maybe. I know there's a bunch of maple trees, he's seen maple tree.
Birch Park Harvest Camp, we're gonna do hunting camps, like, we're gonna kind of really, you know, use this whole area for just be a learning.
And then just so you know, we did send Josh to the, what conference did I send you to?
Yeah, Pete and I went to a trails conference in Reno, Nevada. Um, oh, you didn't go to that one?
But you was part of the Wild Life Services.
Yeah, yeah, Parks uh, Wild Life Service are uh, kind of working with us to help us figure out, you know, signage and like how to make maps. And like how to, you know, make it all make sense for us, so.
For free.
Sounds like we could use that spot for outdoor classes.
That's the plan. Actually, that's the building that we're building, like, that's what I wanted for, is like an outdoor classroom.
Our friends in Wabham have a similar.
They have a school for it.
Yeah, so bring your, yeah, that's what it's gonna be. Bring your kids out, like, take them along the trails, we'll have signs, you know, like birch, you know, tree. But the old way, you know, word for it, QR codes where you can scan, or everything you wanna learn about birch trees and.
Maybe the school district could buy that, just kidding. And the kids could make that, that um, names.
So, go ahead. So, based on what I heard, there's, what, what's the, what's the risk, or you know, what's the, on our end? Cause it sounds like so, just to be sure. So you guys are providing the equipment, you're providing the uniforms, the transportation, the coach.
Oh, no, the coach, hopefully, if we, if you get sanctioned, we presume the coach would be on the school's dime.
And if we got sanctioned and we couldn't provide a coach and decided we can't make this work, then don't do it, you know, that's another. So it sounds like minimal risks on our end, sounds like outside agencies are putting, no, I didn't. And we're not held to, you know, uh, a, a, a long to commitment.
And just testing it, like, what if, maybe we're working, we'll say, that's the, what else can we do then? You know, that, what else can we gotten them in the, in our woods?
It sounds like a win-win for our, our whole tribe and everything. Or kids and, and the, and parents and the elders, or, or, or be for something like that, you know, it's about time. Things get done for the, for the younger. Core, what do you call, elite?
It's kind of what I wanted to say about Hollis, um, I got her, she's tried basketball and other sports too, you know, and. She's, she gave up on it, but she really loves being out there and always skiing and, you know, I think it's just more opportunity for them to be. They need to stay busy, you know, um, throwing up. Being on teams, you know, that builds bonds too between the days, you know? I think it's a good thing to do. All I have to say about it.
Nothing but good, you know, that's for sure.
And I'm glad Jack brought up the intergenerational, because that's what we believe in. When we had, there'd been a couple weeks ago, I had grandparents come up to me and say, I'm so glad you are doing this. Gives us something with the kids, and even like my grandkids were there, they didn't ask for a game once, or their phone, what I mean? Because they're so gay and running and playing and riding the bike and.
Yeah, it was our last event that we had, it was outside, which is why we were like, we should have a warm place for the elders to come sit and hang out. But uh, there wasn't a kid on their phone the whole day, you know.
Y'all got along.
So why, you know, what's happening with the club then? Why isn't that just working? Is it just because you wanna go compete with the other schools?
Yeah, it was like last year, you know, like, feeling, you know, where the kids were like, they were losing interest at the end of last year with Dan. You know, they just got tired of practice, practice, practice.
Just wanna have a game.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, our meat in this case.
Yep. You know, and this like being able to wear a, a uniform and, you know, go race and like represent Red Lake, you know, like, I think that would be. You know, meaningful for those kids.
I think it would look good for Red Lake too. Oh, you have a ski team? Yeah, we also have a robotics team, and we have an esports team, you know?
And cross-country running.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe archery too, or we're gonna put in.
Oh, yeah, he wants to have archery, yes. And then, tell him, he's not to disapply here. Tell, tell him the new guy we're bringing, what we bought this week.
Oh, yeah, so uh, we bought a jiu-jitsu max, and we're getting a legitimate Brazilian, from Brazil, jiu-jitsu instructor. That's gonna be uh, coaching jiu-jitsu up here, so anyone, everyone who wants to learn jiu-jitsu. So I wanna bring your classes, he's gonna be set up in Cherry's old building. Uh, we got like six grand worth of mats, and. And he's like the real deal, so if you guys wanna learn jiu-jitsu or have your kids.
And for me too, he said he teaches anti-bullying, you know, it ain't about learning, it's about anti-bullying, respect, um, public health. He said he'll give them, make them cut their toenails and their fingernails. So I said, well, I'll go buy care packages, you know, when they come. So then, then they go home and they do, they learn that again.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm still waiting for his credentials.
I put it on your desk.
Yeah, he wants to come work full-time, so then I offered that, we will, then if we, we get him full-time, we're gonna let him um. Do gym class at the emergency school during days of week, on our dime, the tribe's dime, right? Come on out.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I think your five minutes are up. Right, that would be the next step, but we would vote probably all, all together for the, for the consent agenda, that we would add G and H and I. You know, so, so I, if you voted in, would be, it's in this, it was sanctioned, but it's up to you.
And then I presume I'd be working with uh, Nolan then, right?
Yeah, he's the one that said, no, we're not gonna do um, competitive with cross-country because. That's four A and three A competition.
But when Mr. Let's explained it in a different light, maybe he just needs to be explained that way, you know, right?
Well, Nolan knows, you know, the Minnesota High School people, and he said, what's up? He was, they sent an email, Mr. Rogers must have jumped right over Nolan and said, it's an ice skate. And the guy turned around and sent it right back to Nolan. What's this about?
Maybe the safest thing would be to, you know, if you were to approve it, and then I can talk to Nolan. And if he says it really isn't going to work, then we back out again, but at least we get the green light if it does work and you want to do it, you know?
He just, I just texted him, he said it, said club. And I said, well, the kids wanna compete, he goes, what, three and four A schools?
Well, same with the robotics, and maybe you don't understand. But again, too, is it then, if Nolan don't wanna do it, and it comes to, we get the green light? Do we then do that work? Like, we're willing to do whatever. Like, if we have to sit there and do an application, if we have, whatever we have to do. For our kids, we wanna do.
And I find with whatever you design is born.
We could try here, you know, and see how it goes, and, you know, and we don't have to be committed to it, you know, then we can pull out. But, you know, I really wanna see some, some more activities offered for our students.
I see Nolan's point too, because three and four levels, uh, we would be traveling. Probably only have two or three meets, but we'd be traveling far. And we'd probably not, you know, if we have a really good superstar or two, we might score key points. If we don't, then we might feel like, oh geez, you know, who are we, competing with these big schools, but.
Would just try harder.
Yeah. At the same time, we want our kids to get out there too.
We always say, go see things, right?
So.
Yeah, our last, last thing that we have, there's like a group of like eight teenagers that ski clear till dark, they just, all day they're skiing, so.
But I like that, that sense of belonging, this is my thing, you know, so I see where you're coming from too, yes. But I like that that sense of belonging, this is my thing, you know, so I see where you're coming from too, yes.
We should probably move on to beyond the guests.
Well, be good to everybody, yeah.
And we'll do that vote.
Let us know, how are we gonna know if we get the green light? You're letting, let us know, you got me.
If you wait about five minutes, we'll be at that point.
Okay, wait.
And so how do we word it then?
Item H would be to approve adding cross-country, Red Lake cross-country as a high school league sanctioned sport. While you're doing that, I could.
So.
Go ahead.
It can't be a separate item, it just has to be added to the consent agenda.
It can still be a separate item, you can say, we approve the consent agenda without letter I, it's up to you, you can approve all three of these new items, or
both letters separately.
Yeah. You can say, we approve of the consent agenda with the exception of any of those, it's up to you. But you would have to, you'd start with, we approve of the consent agenda, a second, then a motion and a second. And then if anybody wants to address taking one off, yeah.
Is there any more guests here today that would like to speak? Are we in? We'll move. We'll move on to item four, approval of agenda for November fifteen, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you Chair Dejarle, and that is where we look at the uh the consent agenda and determine whether we want all three new items or just one, two or three.
How do you feel, Scumbird?
Are we like, do we go out of order when we go, how we just went?
We did the guest, oh, we didn't do summary or.
Oh, just that too.
Yeah.
We're just really trying to jump to this right away.
What we did is we we jumped right to five and we didn't even do three or four.
No, I did be guests.
No, that's just the names order. In my past experience.
That's okay, as long as you agree all.
Why, it just went with guests, I'm sorry Chris.
I mean, you know, I don't, I'm not fully familiar with Robert's rules either, you know what I mean, but I know that there is that's on and there's, you know.
So how would guests be there then?
But it, yes, just to recognize who are guests with us, you know.
Oh.
And uh but that's okay, you know, as long as we're fine with it, nobody was out of order and and uh that's fine.
So now do we jump back to to three?
Summary overview of the agenda.
Yeah, thank you Chair Dejarle, after uh a lot of time, which we've already done, for comments and delegations, we'll look at the latest enrollment report, followed by the business manager's report. After that, we will move into the consent agenda, including the minutes from the October twenty-fourth meeting. The board will then be asked to approve two resignation requests, followed by approval of additions to the sublists. Next, the board will be asked to approve the hire of two new staff members. There's no need for a closed session today. The board will then move into the action items, and there are only two action items, approving the list of bills and wires in the amount of two million five hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and five cents. Followed by the board being asked to approve the November thirty, twenty twenty-three to November thirty, twenty twenty-four contract with Red Lake Nation News. After that, we'll move into miscellaneous concerns, which will include the first reading, two man policy five thirty-four on school meals, we'll then adjourn a meeting, G Migwich.
Alright, so I'll move to approve the, so is it the amended agenda?
Yep.
Alright.
Which includes I, Chris?
Yeah. G H and I. And then we're gonna do I, what did the?
Are we gonna conclude I with the consent, are we gonna vote on that separately?
No, we have a motion to do it all, all together?
Uh no, I separate.
Sorry?
I separate.
Okay.
Okay.
One second.
Big Witch, Kristen, Jack. Any comments? Okay, that being said, we'll take a vote, all those in favor to approve, you say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have four. We're moving on to, okay, five was the public comments and delegations, we've already discussed that, so we're gonna go on to item six, reports. Itchi Okama, the Ba- the Ba Jomol and Superintendent Report.
Thank you Chair Dejarle, and is there, would be at this point though, before we continue to approve, did you want to address I or do we want to not address I? We have to determine if that's that's where we decide, is it part of, so did I hear that that's?
Yeah, I like to, I'm I'm four I, me, that's my opinion.
So we're gonna vote on that separately right now?
Right now, yes.
Because you had voted to approve the one without having to separate this to I, so now we have to address whether or not we approve or disapprove of that.
There's four left here, that's I'm four, I'm for Jack. This is four, some call.
Uh, aye, I'll be four too.
You can always back on if it doesn't mean.
Alright. Thank you guys.
We'll be knocking on the door, just kidding. Thank you guys, be good.
Be good for your time, yes.
They're doing a lot of cool stuff now.
Mm-hmm.
How could you, could they say no to that?
Really, you know, really cost us.
Yeah, after they said they're gonna do transportation, okay.
Yep, good point.
I've tried one year anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're here for the kids, you know.
And we know how important sense of belonging is.
Over the years, we we played three A teams and we played two A and we played four A, you know, all that does is make your team better.
Yeah, that um.
You rise to the occasion.
You know, that crew.
My, in my opinion anyway, in my experience, you ain't gonna get any better unless you're playing the best.
Yeah, I used to take McLean and Acker up against Hopkins.
Oh yeah, I remember that.
Alright, now.
Big Witch for your comments.
Here's the last that.
Oh, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rob.
Rob, I'm ranked eighth and was second by Jack. And everybody's in favor of you.
Our barely quorum was in favor.
Yeah. Alright, so then you had said we're on six now, right, the uh reports?
Yes.
Take a look, I would direct you to or um ask you to look at item page four in your board book. And that's the monthly enrollment and that's good news, we're up by fifteen students compared to this time last year or even just three weeks ago, well, about this time last year, about a month ago. A month ago, our enrollment was fifteen eighteen, we are now at fifteen thirty-three, so started out the year lower than spring by a fair amount, like about uh, you know, fifty-four, but we've gained back fifteen of that, so trending in the right direction and that's good. Then, if I could think still under reports here, a reminder that we have future meetings and events coming up. November twenty-eighth, we have the second M S E A contract negotiation session.
That being here again?
Yep, yep, and I went well the first meeting.
Who's who's all on there with me? Um, I come last week. Chris, you on it?
Uh, yeah, that's the um.
Not certified.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm on there, however, I was in.
You were, yeah.
I was in here last week.
Is Tina on there with us?
I don't know.
Then looking at this date.
We can find that out in between now and then.
Jack, you you ain't on, I don't think I'm on the other one.
You got, you two are, so if you can make that, that would be great.
On the twenty-eighth?
Yeah. We also have a Health and Safety Crisis Committee meeting on the December, on the fourth of December. If we need to, we'll have the third M S E A contract negotiation, and if we need a fourth, it'll be December eighth, that's the Monday and the Friday of that week. And then December eleventh, at six in the evening, we have a truth in taxation hearing, which is run by Willie, we do that every year towards the beginning of December. Then, moving on to the next report, we have the finance report from Willie and as you know, it's always a lengthy report, but I can report to you what he told me, is everything is in order. And we still stand strong with our general fund and all of our other funds, so everything is in order. We need no action on those items, so we move on.
We'll move on to item seven.
G Migwich, Chair Dejarle, this is where we're at the consent agenda, so we recommend that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to approve.
Witch, Chris?
I'll second it.
Witch, Rob, is there any comments? Are we in? Yeah, with that being said, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four, zero against. Item eight, post-session if necessary.
Yeah, no need, we might in a month if we're still negotiating, but.
Okay.
Today.
Item, oh, sorry, to back up, to back up to that M S E A, how many? Like this date, no one worked for me, I'll be out of town, so.
I'll be here.
Do we need, like, do we need a certain amount?
No.
Nope.
I was here two years ago, this, this me.
Yep, and and we're very close already and in settling, so your ask and our offer, we're very similar, very close, and it was a very good meeting, so I think we'll just be done after one.
Is that um parents and those?
Yeah, that's all the bus drivers, cooks.
All the hourly.
All of them.
Got you, okay.
The historian?
Yep.
All the twelve-month employees?
Yep, everybody in the hourly. Okay.
Hey, Megwich. We're gonna move on to item nine, action items. Nine A, approve bills and wires for the month of October two thousand twenty-three.
Again, everything is in order, recommend you approve, it's the only thing to do every month.
Have any discussions?
No, I'll need to approve.
Big Witch, Chris, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Witch, Rob. Now, do we have any comments or concerns? Okay, with that being said, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Jack, did you say aye? Big Witch? Item nine B, approve the November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, November thirty, two thousand twenty-four contract with the Red Lake Nation Moves. Oh.
Yep, and this is of course with with Michael Barrett, uh the contract rate for the previous year was thirty-six hundred a year, and it will remain the same, that's always nice when you don't see an increase. And uh I'm not sure if he left because he didn't want, you know.
Ah, he can't be in there.
He he could be here, but he can't yet abstain.
He's gonna be before he just abstains. I think he might have to pick up his.
He'll be right back, he has to go with the kids.
Is he abstaining or yes?
Yep, he generally, i- if it affects you as a board member, you know, your income or something, you have to abstain.
What do you, what is this contract? What is, what's in there then? What are we paying for?
He covers our news stories for us and online.
Sports, sports and girls and boys.
Even things like school closing, he's him to announce that, yeah.
So it's the school's media outlet, you're right?
Yep.
Okay.
The elders, look at their grandkids on.
So I don't know if you guys been getting any, uh-huh. That's weird. Anybody's asking you about, there's seems to be a lot of confusion and I approached you with our school, because we have a what what do we call the person who we hired for almost the same thing?
The I T?
Hmm, that she's our uh marketing manager. Technically, this is, you know, every school district, you have an official newspaper, so he's our official newspaper.
Like she wouldn't be going to games or anything else, right?
Right, and it's covered. She's not a newspaper, she's a PR leg, you know, they are.
So there's a lot of, like, there's a lot of people that didn't know of our our early clothing, you know, and and I don't know.
I don't know why that is, because we have it on about ten different outlets.
But some of them, some of our, some of our info, and then this is maybe it's off topic, but I don't even know if it was on here, on his thing.
It was several times last year, I reached out, maybe, not that he, maybe he didn't get it on and.
There was a lot of confusion, there there was very low attendance with our with our parent conferences and and you know what I mean, and and.
Or like last parent conference, we got calls up until eleven at night. This last one, we didn't get any kind of notification that it was a parent conference going on or early release. It was just some of the staff taking upon themselves sarcastically posting it on their Facebook, saying, hey, don't you guys know, you know, and I was just like.
If that's something I know, Becca sends stuff out, so if you haven't, maybe if you're not signed up to receive those, you know, get them.
No, like we did last time, and they called six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and and they emailed. But this past time last week, ain't nobody called.
Okay.
And so I think that's what Chris is referring to, that everyone was confused, how come we're not communicating with the public?
They are, and she did send them out, so I don't know what the glitch is, I'll try to find out with our check.
No, there was nothing sent out last week, nobody knew.
What happened there? Okay, I'll look into that.
So that isn't on on Red Lake Nation Moves?
But I don't know if it was posted on there, you know.
Yeah, on their part, it's on the school part.
Yeah, that those automated calls and stuff, and then I've been approaching you, emailing you on how much this is, you know, uh wrong information is going on on our on our school, the Facebook page, you know what I mean, where it's the wrong calendar.
The November calendar, like. The template, it looks like.
Yep, and when template wasn't totally updated, which is something that sometimes I end up doing, you take an old template and you leave something.
And and so somebody who goes on to the district on Facebook said, hey, this isn't different, and I was like, okay.
There's not thirty days.
But it's not. Yeah.
Thirty-one in November, yeah.
So yeah, little petty stuff like that.
Yeah, just makes us looking organized.
Yep, so I'll I'll work on that, I'll talk to.
And so, and I don't know if, so I was wondering, I'm not, I don't always go to this, you know what I mean, and what is our other? Is it the Midgee Pioneer stuff, or do we just go here?
Pretty much.
We just have one outlet.
Media outlet, and this is it, you kind of, do we do the the tribal newsletter, isn't it?
I know, that's a tribal, so I don't know for sure.
Charles, Chris, mainly what 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 is this contract, what is these?
It was, you know, largely our sports, other major announcements and board meetings and things like that.
All that goes out, does it? Like if he doesn't, you know what I mean, any other contract, if you don't fulfill your duties, what happens?
I think he's doing that sometimes, maybe on our end, we don't get him everything, I do know one time last year.
Yeah, I feel like there's all activities going on and it's like cream or elementary, you know, how is he even supposed to be up there, nobody contacts him.
Yep, so so it's not always his fault, sometimes we.
Christmas party program going on.
But what about this Red Lake District thirty-eight, you open it and boom, there's our media outlet.
Yep, and that's what Becca runs, and that's what the channel through most of these things.
And so she posted for hours, so late when PBS announces Ms. Johnson as, you know, then a day ago, she has plus twenty-three route today. Take kids past circle, find, you know, the seven days ago, eighth grade schools.
The public relations, P R, marketing, that's her, he does the news.
So when you bring up, when you bring up sports, there was no junior high, football never made.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to sit down with him now, we should cover all junior high, boys and girls.
Yeah, and that would actually be an Nolan thing, if you're talking about activities, so we should make sure Nolan is connected to him.
No, I'm talking about, he said that the contract is is sharing the pictures, but.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
There was no junior high coverage, you know what I mean?
I don't know what to talk, tell them, that should be.
Yep, I'll have a chat with him, we'll coordinate. At any rate, we're voting on thirty-six hundred for another year, pretty reasonable actually.
Oh yeah, we can ask questions.
Oh yeah, absolutely, but I'm just saying that the uh the good news is, you know, I'm used to seeing twelve thousand, fifteen thousand for the official room cover, so, kind of nice that it's such a.
Well, what 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 would it be if it was the Midgee? They can put in a lot, and I remember, I think it was in the thousands.
Holy.
And on top of that, they charge anytime there's an ad in the paper, a notice of anything, charge a lot. So per inch or whatever, however they do that, a print. So.
Well, make a move. Let's prove it.
Migwich Jack.
Yeah, I'm second it.
Migwich Rob. Any further comments or concerns?
Well, this is where I should have waited.
No, 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 there's a further comment, and I didn't mean to imply you shouldn't have a question.
But you got somewhere to go, man.
Same.
Kind of enjoyed our good weather.
Well, that's true. Were you?
No, but no further comments or concerns, okay, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you in, Chris?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna go.
How in?
Go.
So three to one, okay. Big which for that, we'll go, move on to item ten, miscellaneous.
Thank you, Chair de Charlet, no vote on this at the moment, this is the first reading. But this is kind of interesting, we are required. To update our food service policy. With some language that doesn't even apply to us. Uh, because we are being reviewed, which happens every three or four years, mainly by M D E for our food service. And when they review, they always check our food service policy. And they're telling us, we need to add one sentence that says, the district does not offer à la carte items or second meals. And they're telling us to add that. Once a bill is reached at fifty dollars for our food, families will be notified with letters sent home.
With our bills?
We don't do that, our meals are free.
Yeah.
But we have to have the same language in there, every other school district has, even though. We don't serve, so. As a first reading, I'm just letting you know that those are the adjustments, and we'll. See it again next month for a vote, probably. It's kind of goofy, but.
So, I thought we were just, not just us, but that's actually really.
Yep, the whole state is getting free meals, but. They do, kids who want a second helping of à la carte, or a second helping of something, like second milk, or a second. Casserole, that's when they may have to pay something extra.
But our kids aren't getting enough to eat breakfast and lunch, they, no complaints from anybody?
I've never gotten a complaint, they're always up for that.
Yeah.
And.
Fifth grade?
Fifth grade, hungry back there, and there's some staff will, no, will close the doors. And it's not the kitchen staff.
In the elementary?
Yeah. You can get another amount, but it's gotta be a wet.
I'll talk about, I'll, uh.
Holy smoke.
I'll, uh.
You know, I mean, I, and I, you know, I.
Sure to eat, you know?
Yeah.
There's nothing worse to be than seeing food thrown away.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and I don't know if we, and I brought it up a long time ago, it's on my first. I mean, here, but, um, they, 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 what they can follow on is, uh, federal or whatever, you know, whatever this ruling is. In somewhere, and they say, no, we can't, uh, we got a portion. Alright, we can, and it's cool and all, but, you know, I mean, just, we're just, we constantly.
And they throw away the extra.
And then, then even in the regular, I mean, you should see the vegetables thrown away, the proof on like it.
Yeah, we have signs up now that say, feed your stomach, not the garbage can.
Yeah, so we.
Oh, and it's hard, hard to see waste.
So I don't know how we can do that, you know what I mean, be like, like some of, some staff will go around and ask, hey, you can eat that, you know, and they'll try to share with them.
Yep, and we have the sharing table.
But, yeah, there's a lot in the kitchen.
And bananas.
Some days, some days, if some people aren't in there, they'll wheel it out, hook them up, but people are.
Nice to have a sharing table, then a kid needs extra milk, grab it, please.
Yeah, they're fourth, fifth milk.
Seems a little harsh.
Seen kids take three, four things out, like apples, and oranges, and you know, like, sure. Yep.
So, cool, that's.
This is kind of funny, this meeting, I looked at it and I thought, oh, what was that from this?
Well, you guys. I want the presentation to go most of it, um, so miscellaneous, I had a, uh. Good question, so the peer mediation group is that similar to any other club, or is it? Does it have, is it exempt from?
Yep, the peer leader group, that's similar to other clubs, yeah.
So is there, um, academic criteria to be in that?
Yep, they have, they have to, uh, apply. And they have to maintain good behavior and good academic.
Like same as the, remember we went through the whole C? Plus minus, C minus?
And there are. Three students that we're going to be having a chat with about. In. In their, uh, grades or behavior reports office, so.
But you then, and then, um, like you just told, we're meeting at Paul thirty tomorrow.
Yep.
So we're pulling them on it.
It's their, it's their study hall, and their advisor, and so. And we do it just like once a month, every week or every other week, so it's not. All the time, my goal is to turn that into a class next semester, then they're in there as a class, getting credit for it, and learning leadership skills.
Oh, yeah.
Nice.
Cause we're gonna be running into this grades next month when basketball starts, we need to help them, young ladies and young guys.
Exactly.
And also.
Yeah, uh.
And if they have a stilted study hall, you know, we, that's, that's, we gotta use that, so we're not pulling, you know. Cause like now basketball would be like, go to, go to home or cup, which is cool that we have, but if we have in, in school.
Day, we can send some of those peer leaders to a class. It's going on, and he helps sit next to the student, get caught up with. Yep. Peer tutor stuff, and I'm thrilled that our, our discipline incidents are down by about half this year. And one of the biggest changes was the yonder phone coaches, that the peer leaders are making an impact. P B I S. What they're doing is working. Now we gotta double up, reduce it again by half. Or.
Yeah. Big which?
It's like, that's ready for motion. Yeah, I'd like somebody up there.
Well, since we're, we're done with miscellaneous, we'll move on to item eleven, adjournment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
I'm second it.
Thank you, Rob. And Jack seconded?
Yeah.
Or, or who seconds it?
Um, Jack, Jack did.
Oh.
You gotta stay and vote.
Yeah, you gotta vote, Jack.
Mike is.
We're still in the meeting. Jack, we're still in the meeting, that's disrespectful for you to get up and walk off.
Girl at school.
Yeah, well, Mike's here, there, there's four, yeah, you're clearing, Mike's here.
And you know, even if, even if three of you went, we started with a quorum, we can end without a quorum, because we.
I was, I was, I wanted to bring up more, I wasn't ready to.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I was like. So Jack's exiting.
So, uh, on that note, you know, so here we are again, barely scraping by with the quorum, and it's a lot of our people watching us.
Yep.
And it makes us look rather disorganized, you know, and I hear the comments, you know what I mean, and what? And where, where, where's supposed to be the leadership of this district, right? So. That leadership can translate into a lot of different things, you know, and, and, and one of, one of the things that came up to me was. The time we voted to hire somebody for missing work, for not doing their job duty. You know, and then here we were, you know what I mean? We're, we're sporadic in attendance, uh, how many of these were, I was weird, called meeting time? You know, they see that, it's right there. That walks by and sees that, and then, and again. I don't know how we.
Do we make a public statement to let the community know, so they win at the next election, or how do we go about this?
When is the next election?
I don't think we wanna get voted in the election.
Yeah.
But to make a statement, we can explain, you know, why are these school members always absent?
Obviously shouldn't do that, I mean, I don't think we should.
But we are the leaders of this school.
Yeah, but I still don't think we should involve with anything that's real with another board member.
But we can, M S B A rules said we can.
If anybody else missed work, what would happen? If anybody else missed work, what's the number one thing that would happen?
Yeah, well, there'd be some kind of action taken.
No, but, but, well, even before that, you know, if I don't go to work, I don't get paid.
Yeah.
Right, what happens here? They're still gonna get paid.
Yes.
Right, but yeah, we, with, if an employee, then, and, and it came to us, we would say, we would have to support, cause policy says. You don't make, you know, you miss work, you don't get paid, right? And if, if somebody fought, tried it up to the board level, that's what we would be saying, but yet, not all of us are practicing that, you know, and I just, I just don't like. The look of it, because, you know, some of us have, have, um. Done this, or, you know, it's personal mistake, it's here. You know what I mean? And, and I just think we all should. So I don't know how we can address that, there's the M S B A thing, I don't know how, do you know more about?
Well, as far as.
About that?
M S B A, you know, um, after three missed, you can be removed as a school member. Without any. You know, I know that can be hap, that can be done.
Well, is there, uh, you know, like, cause maybe people aren't money motivated to get in here, I mean, cause there's a stipend, and. And, you know, that's what. Motivates most people to go to work, right, they go to work for the month, so is there any way we can, you know, and I, I, I. Twenty twenty, I think I proposed it, and I didn't get no, I didn't get no support, but I was like, hey, no meeting, no money.
I agree with you, Chris.
Is that impossible?
Is that something we can look into?
We could certainly, with, uh, probably a reading or two, change the policy that says. Don't, don't get paid, I'm not here. I think that'd be a good thing to look into.
Yeah, we've talked about that for many years, you know, about pay part of, and it's not fair, I mean, people miss meetings, it's not fair in the rest of the world, we're here. You know, and, um. I mean. I, I think it's up to us to make, as a board, to make that decision, and, I mean, it's up to us to govern, we, we govern ourselves supposedly.
Right.
And, um. I mean, I don't see that, I don't see a problem in that. It's just removing someone is where I see there's, there's a problem, there's always been problems in that.
Has it ever been tried before?
But it, it's a.
No. Because you, you have to miss three consecutive meetings.
We know.
The way the policy is, as far as I, as far as I understand, is you have to miss three consecutive meetings. Before you can be removed.
And that, is that like, without even, you know, like, uh, like, uh, you know, like, Simon's last week, you know what I mean, cause I had a preview.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes.
But she let us know.
So we have stuff, yeah, sometimes.
Yeah. For, so, is it three?
Sickness or, you know?
Three no call no show type of thing, you know what I mean, where like, like, we asked if anybody here from, no.
Yeah. But you, you know, you're not gonna miss three consecutive ones, was, was the way I thought the policy read.
Okay.
I thought, I, I'm not sure.
I'm pretty sure it says within a term.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't.
Three meetings within a term.
So is that a Red Lake board policy, and then you're quoting M S B A?
M S B A, cause that's what we follow, M S B A.
Well, we have our own policy.
Yeah, okay.
But Red Lake follows M S B A.
Well, not necessarily.
We can, you can edit it, is what you're saying.
Yeah, we have our own policy on conduct, I think.
You should.
I thought we did. That was, that was why it was three, you missed three consecutive meetings, and your subject. You, you can be recalled, I think, of all that's worth.
And there's an, also another one, Tim, where you give a public notice?
Yep, but that is. You, uh, you're talking about for elections?
Like, um. Like, is there a public?
You know, I've never, I don't know, I've never dealt with that.
I keep that talk to M S B A prior to the thing I missed popping.
Cause I've never dealt with, uh. Situation where somebody's been gone two, three, four in a row. Or where we wanted to reprimand or censure or remove.
See, I don't think I've ever, you know, heard of three, four in a row either, but here we are, you know.
And I agree.
Yeah, like, like yours. The pay part too, I mean. We, we'd have to make a policy for that then?
There is one in M S B A.
We, we would have to.
We can adopt that policy?
Policy on, if, if you don't do it at a meeting. I mean, that, that's only fair, though, I mean, you know, I, you know, I. Yeah, so we're taking all of the community, you know, well, there's only four of us here again. I mean, yeah. You know?
All year.
Couple of members before that, you know, missed quite a bit, you know, but, um. You know, and we always talked about, we're gonna do this, you know, let's, let's do that, but it never really got, you know, we would talk about it a little bit, but we're never really. It never really got to where we were ready to be the action on.
Yeah, no, I'm, twenty twenty, in November, I made the motion.
Yeah?
You know, and that was, it died at the table, so.
Oh.
Cause we buy that, you know what I mean, that's just something I believe in, and, and.
Well, that's almost like you said, it's only fair, I mean, you're the employees, that's right, we're not considered employees. They need a bad example for them. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Nothing.
Well, why don't, why don't we? Do something on that then, why don't we, I mean, I don't think we can do it right now, right?
Yeah, I was looking for.
Probably not now, but the next board meeting, we can give the pair. We do have policy two seventeen, which is the school board member honorarium. Or pay policy, so we already have that. And, uh, I could send that to you, so we, you could look it over between now and the next board meeting. Basically talks about how the honorarium amount may be raised. By a majority vote of the board. Uh, usually when we do our reorganization media, meeting. The honorarium amount may be decreased at any time by a majority vote of the Board of Education. But it doesn't address. Paying the way. For something that's ending, so. I think this is where we would add. This move.
Yeah. I think that's the thing that I had. I mean, you know, and sometimes there are circumstances, like, you know, whether it's someone who got in a car, and they're, you know, and good. You know, and that's like, uh. You know, you know, it's not necessarily, they're not intentionally missing, I mean.
Yeah.
We assume now, you can log in.
Yeah.
Yep.
You can log in, you've got to be in a hotel lobby or airport lobby.
Somebody's in a coma or something, you know.
And we have phones, and we can call the board chair and say, I won't be able to make.
Yeah.
Cause I.
That's, that's the least everybody should do, I think, I mean, you're gonna get no call from me. I always forget to call Sherry.
I'm the board chair.
I always call her.
Oh, Sherry's the one.
Yeah, she's our. We let her know then.
But I didn't hear from the other two.
Oh. She lets everybody else know, I mean, that's, that's just, I mean.
And I know the other two, it's more than three. In one term already. With no calls, no show.
Yeah, that's not good, I mean, not, I mean, you know, it's not. Not a good thing.
Big which for bringing this to the surface, cause it's been on my mind too. About being the executive board member.
Yes.
So what are we gonna do then, you know? It should be something we can vote on the next meeting?
I think so, uh.
Amend our policy two seventeen.
Yep. In the meantime, I can double check to make sure it really is two seventeen, or if there's a separate one that deals with. Censoring.
Conduct.
Conduct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, censoring is the word.
Yep.
There is a public censor that we, that could be done.
I think we've done that. Seems like.
Still have the community in order absent one.
Seems like essential under one, but that was just, it wasn't really nothing, did we share it, I mean, do you remember?
I don't remember that.
Yeah. I mean, it really didn't do any good, all this is censor them, and, I mean, they still had all the, you know, you still got to get the pay, if you get. Did the vote, I mean. Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I. That should be something.
We've gotta make sure it's, it's legal, but we're gonna.
Exactly.
We're all getting a big heap and.
End up getting censored or something?
Yeah, going to jail, Mike.
I always call M S B A.
And I think, you know, and if you'd like, let me know what you'd like them to do, but I could find out. About what form that censure should take, should it be removal from the board after three? Or, just, cause that's something we, I know you're considering as well, and then if you just miss one. You not get paid, so there's two things we should probably add, and if we have people who don't show up. Consistently, then we need to replenish this.
The work policy is, you know, you gotta call, yeah, by a certain time, you know what I mean? So it's only fair.
Call anybody.
So it's only fair, we follow, you know, we should follow the same rules we expect to.
I agree.
Staff.
So that, you know, that brings us to over three absences, no call, no show.
Yeah.
For two board members.
So, okay, so December twentieth, then you'll have, or.
Oh, that's our next.
Right?
Yeah. In the meantime, I will send you policy two seventeen, so you can look it over too.
Who does Jack have opinion on, like, he didn't really know?
No, cause I was, he split before I got here. He motioned.
Yeah, he already motioned, we didn't vote on the thing yet.
Oh, online?
No, mine.
No, no.
Oh.
No, on miscellaneous is where, where we were.
Oh.
I need motion to adjourn.
Oh.
So that's where we're at.
On the policy, of, of the policy?
No, we're on motion to adjourn now.
Oh.
Or.
Yeah, I was looking over that policy, and I, I don't remember us ever. Going after somebody for not paying, I mean.
Oh, now, yeah, you said it's just uh, like a formality.
Oh, I said, yeah, cause I, I was, I was looking at that, and geez, we, we doing it, I thought everybody gets free lunch, you know?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Everybody definitely.
You're, you're in fact.
Super staff, right?
State requires us to put that on, so that we can pass our inspection of food service.
Oh, oh.
Stupid stuff.
Or staff pay ten dollars, five, three?
It's four something, I believe for lunches, I forget the exact amount, but.
So.
And then a lot of staff get free if they work with kids during lunch, supervised.
Alright.
Cause they're gonna drop that up then and go.
Yeah. Exactly. Thanks for doing this, because I think it is important that we model the behavior we expect from. Our staff, our students, and ourselves.
So it's gonna be about the pay only, or is it gonna be about the?
It's both, but I think the one might influence the other, you know?
Yeah.
Exactly.
If I don't gotta show up, where can I get paid, I'm not gonna go to work.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, but you hit the pocketbook, I'll be here.
How long's a meeting, take a couple hours, you know?
And some meetings.